Now. Called to order the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council, Monday, September 16th, 2019, 7:00 PM. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Hudson. Item two, the Pledge of Allegiance. Did all stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Good day, ladies.
Item three, Rules of Order. We operate our meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order and other rules and procedures that were adopted at the organizational meeting in November of last year. Before we move on to item four, I'd like to make a motion to add two items, please. Item, there would be items nineteen and twenty. The first one would be the new business item. Council Order Number 91909, request to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract agreement between the City of Ellsworth and Stephen E. Joy regarding the access to Leonard Lake roadway for purposes of the stream lake, for the Branch Lake Stream dam removal. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. And the second item I'd like to add is item number twenty, Council Order Number 091910, request to determine a public exigency related to Branch Lake Stream Dam removal exists and requires the immediate taking of so-called Leonard Lake Road and to approve order of condemnation taking Leonard Lake Road pursuant to 23 MRSA subsection 3023.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, August 19th, 2019, regular council meeting, and August 26th, 2019, special council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move or move.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, City Manager's Report. Manager Cole.
Counselor Moore has informed me that one of Ellsworth's own, Robert Springer, son of Mike and Sidney Springer of Lincoln Street, last Friday night was raised to the rank of Eagle Scout. That's quite an accomplishment, so congratulations, Robert. Terms of upcoming events, it's all about autumn gold. September 27th through the 29th, there's quite a list of events, Thursday through Sunday. I'm just going to highlight a few that are actually at city venues. The Rotary Pancake Breakfast on Saturday morning is going to be at the Ellsworth Middle School. Again, lots of other things going on as well. The library, the library is putting on a craft show, I believe, on this Saturday called Drop-In Fall-Themed Crafts for Children. They've done that up big in the past. Encourage you to visit our library. And of course, at the city's Harbor Park on Saturday is the Chowder Fest and boat rides, and there are also going to be train rides and Acacia air tours and a whole number of events over that period of time. So go to the Chamber of Commerce website for more information on these events and take in all that Ellsworth has. That's all I have today.
Thank you very much. Item six, Committee Reports. If there's any councilors that have been to any committee meetings in the last month that would like to report on them, now's your turn. Excuse me, Counselor Hamilton.
Do you have one?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Recreation Committee met, looking past fall into winter, believe it or not. So the winter carnival planning is underway. The committee is looking at trying to secure a date, some discussion, trying to predict what the weather's going to be. I think it's going to be cold, but we don't know. So it looks like the one weekend is the last weekend of that vacation week in February is being considered, trying to find a date that we can get most participation. So that's still under discussion. There's also a discussion underway about exploring the development of a dog park. And so if you have any interest in participating in that, please get in touch with the Recreation Committee. The currently fall soccer is underway, and there are several teams involved in that, many kids participating. And the closure of the basketball courts will happen in early October. Those will be closed down for the season. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Moore.
Well, the Harbor Commission met, and Counselor Phillips was there. I had to leave early. He came a little bit late. And quite frankly, I forgot to bring my notes, but I can tell you this, that the amount of money that was brought in this past season, and we still expect some more to come in for mooring fees and slip fees, has surpassed the $30,000 figure. And there's evidently an individual who's bringing two boats in, and they also probably be buying another thousand gallons of fuel. So hopefully, the amount of fuel sold during 2019 will be perhaps the highest amount of fuel that we've sold, if this happens.
Buy it now before the price goes up.
Yes, and it's excellent fuel. It's a mid-grade, and it doesn't have any of the corn in it.
No corn.
So it'll be good for your lawn mowers. Go down and buy some.
Counselor Phillips, can you follow that up?
Very difficult, it's very difficult to go after him. Yeah, there was some talk, they're looking forward to the tanks coming in. The fuel tanks are being replaced now, will be done over the winter, but I think by Gaff Tech was the winning bidder. Fuel sales were consistent. Boats, one, only one boat didn't arrive over the summer. They had a very busy season that way. The harbor master or the crew was in the midst of buying a replacement boat for their aged one to work the harbor. They found a second-hand one, which saved the city some money and does exactly all that they need to do. Now, I guess highlights, wouldn't you say, John?
Yes, in fact, the boss of all the highway department and other things, Lisa, took us out for a ride Friday
Oh.
in the new boat to celebrate the acquiring of this boat officially.
Macrophish, too?
Yeah, she was, she skippered the boat, and she did a good job. No one was hurt.
And everyone came back. It's as good as it's going to get, Mr. Williams.
Assuming that's all on the Committee Reports. Moving on to item seven, Citizens' Comments. We set this time aside for anyone that would like to make any comments about pretty much anything, as long as it is not an item on the agenda. So if there's anyone that would like to tell us anything, now's your time, have at it.
I would.
Counselor Fordyear.
Mr. Chairman, early this morning, the fire service lost another member in Farmington. I'd ask everybody to keep the fire service and the particular multiple family members in Farmington. One was killed, five or six were injured, some of them critical. And every time you see that big red truck coming up behind you, get out of the way because they got a job to do. And these people died, this person died doing that job selfishly, selflessly. And you go home tonight, say a prayer.
Thank you. Very appropriate. Item eight, Presentation of Awards. Madam Clerk, I'm not aware of any tonight. Are you? Thank you. The Consent Agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's or requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Two of them denied. Item nine, Council Order Number 091901, request of the city clerk for approval on the time polling places open for the November 5th, 2019 State of Maine Referendum election and City of Ellsworth Municipal Election as 8:00 AM. And item 10, Council Order Number 091902, request of the city clerk for appointment of wardens and ward clerks for four voting districts within the City of Ellsworth for the November 5th, 2019 State of Maine Referendum election and City of Ellsworth Municipal Election.
Mr. Chairman, move the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 11, Public Hearing and Action on the Applications for the Following Licenses. First one this evening is Han Yi Incorporated Doing Business as China Hill Restaurant, 301 High Street, for renewal of a Class B license Victular Liquor and Amusement and renewal of a state restaurant Class I, II, III, and IV Malts, Spiritus, Vinus Liquor License. This is a public hearing on this application. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this, now is your time. Seeing no bakers, public hearing is closed. Counselors.
Mr. Chairman, move approval to request the China Hill Restaurant for renewal of their licenses.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next is Joseph A. Lusardi Doing Business as Maine Organic Therapy, 3 Myrick Street, Suite B, for renewal of a medical and marijuana dispensary license, including a city victual license. Public hearing on this application is open. Public hearing is closed.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next, Provender LLC Doing Business as Provender, 112th Main Street, for renewal of a city Class C license Victular and Liquor and renewal of a state restaurant Class I, II, III, and IV Malts, Spiritus, and Vinus Liquor License. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, move approval, request of Provender.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. And lastly, Eastwood Bowling Lanes Incorporated Doing Business as Acacia Bowling Bar and Grill, 25 Eastwood Lanes, for renewal of a city Class B license Victular Liquor and Arcade and renewal of a state restaurant Class III and IV Malts and Vinus Liquor License. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval for relicensing of Eastwood Bowling Lanes.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 12, Council Order Number 091903, request of the Public Works directed to approve a contract with Josh Wellman from DM&amp;J Disposal for food waste collection at the transfer station.
Good evening, councilors. Lisa Seklisch, Public Works Director. I'm going to apologize, I have a splitting headache, so hopefully, yeah.
We'll try not to make it worse.
What's that?
We'll try not to make it worse.
Um, so I'm here tonight to ask, we were approached by DM&amp;J or Maine Organics about the potential for having a food slash seafood collection bin at the transfer station for food waste composting. They would supply the, what they call toters, that residents and the signage for what's acceptable and not acceptable in this composting bin. They would pick it up, I think, weekly or every two weeks or so, depending on how full and how things work out, and then take it over to their composting facility and compost it. It's beneficial for us, it gets some of the food waste out of our, what we send to perk, as well as composting organic materials. And Josh Wellman is here, if you guys have any other questions.
Counselors? Any questions?
Just an explanation. I was part of the meeting as a solid waste, and this is a little bit cheaper than the same tonnage going to perk, so it's an added benefit to our citizens that want to do the right thing and compost this stuff instead of burning it up. But not only that, Lisa forgot to explain the compactors, the brand-new compactors. If we take all this organic material out of them, they're going to last a lot longer. We got the seafood shells and waste out of there. They're working very well. Long-term, this is getting stuff out of the waste stream that's dang, not dangerous. It's impacting our equipment because of the organics.
Manager Cole.
Think also stress that this is a pilot or demonstration project to see if this can work, if the citizens of Ellsworth will participate and bring their organics. And I think if it is successful, this of course is up to DM&amp;J, but they could be placing these bins at other locations. And every bit, as Counselor Fordyear said, every bit of material to get out of the waste stream is that much less that we have to send to perk, and better to have it composted than in our waste stream.
I would ask that we do the paperwork and weigh the bins when they leave so we know the success of our efforts, throw them on the scale and get a number.
This is, this is any food item? Liquid, solid?
Uh, I'd say yes. I don't think that DM&amp;J is going to make us a pamphlet.
Come on up the podium, come on up the podium, so the public can see.
We'll make, there's going to be a sign that we'll make near the bins that we have set up, and then we'll have the transfer station attendant pass out information on what can be composted and what can't. And on this sign that's near the bins, it will, it will say what can be composted. You know, it's going to be fruits, vegetables, meats, cooked pasta, breads, liquids, fish waste, seafood waste, a number of different things that can be composted, so.
And those who are interested can come and get a tote?
Well, the tote will be set right up at the transfer station.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they're basically like big trash cans, just the toters. And we'll set up like, you know, like, we'll start off with probably like five or six of them and just see how it goes, you know, see how they fill up. I don't really know how it's going to flock. It's a trial and error thing. So it's when people come to the city transfer station, they'll bring their food waste there, dump it in the toter, and then they can get rid of their other trash in the, in the compactor and the recycling and the recycling.
Will some of the explanations be on the city's website?
Yes.
So that they'll know before they get
Exactly.
There.
Yeah. You were going to work on that, right? We'll get something together and put it on the, put it on the website.
While you're standing there, you were telling what was acceptable, and is there anything that an average person might think is allowed and shouldn't be brought? Anything specifically that you wouldn't want that's a glaring whoops, no?
Like a dog bone?
No, bones can go.
They can go.
Yeah, bones can go.
I think the key thing is going to be like any plastic or paper wrapping is not going to want to be in there.
Exactly, yeah.
You can't leave it in a plastic bag.
Food only, not, yeah.
Throw it in there, it's organics only.
Yeah, and there's compostable plastics and cardboard and whatnot, but I didn't even put that on there because it could get confusing, and then once the material gets contaminated, it's hard to get it out of the stream, so we try to keep it as clean as possible.
General household food stuff alone, not wrapping or anything else.
Right, exactly.
And just so people know, unlike the recycling, the food will not, there'll be five or six totes, but the food will not be separated, meat into one, pasta into the other, so.
All mixed.
Kale into the fifth?
There will be no kale. Not in the waste stream, anyway. Any other questions, councilors? Is there a motion?
Sounds good. Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works directed to go into an agreement with DM&amp;J Maine Organics to have food waste collections at the transfer station and allow the city manager to sign such an agreement.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, Council Order Number 091904, request of the Public Works directed to award a proposal for the replacement and installation of overhead doors at the transfer station.
Good evening, councilors. This request is to replace some of the doors at the transfer station with the hope of additional doors being replaced next year. Two prices were requested, with two vendors went to the transfer station to measure and look over the existing doors. Only one price quote was returned, and that is from PDQ Door. I originally budgeted $34,000 for this project with replacing all four metal roll-up doors and the two entry doors, but this budget figure has exceeded based on the quotes we received. I'm requesting then to replace two of the entry doors and then two of the metal roll-up doors at compactor number one, which is the one closest to the recycling center. The smaller door at this location is currently unusable, it's left open at this point in time, and the large door at this location has been sticking and having motor issues for the past year and a half. The total for my requested project this year would be the $23,408.50 to PDQ Door, and then the, there's some minor electrical costs to rewire the new motors that would have to go into that also. I would request that we roll over any of the remaining funds allocated to this project to the next budget season, where the request would then be made to replace the remaining two roll-up doors and possibly some windows.
That's different than the
Counselors?
Yeah, who was the other vendor that did not return?
Overhead door.
And no response, no reason why?
They came out, they looked at it, and they said they'd give me a quote, and I called and emailed, and they
No response.
No response.
That's quite envy, isn't it?
Lisa, a question I have.
Yes.
On the two entry doors.
Yes.
They're hollow.
Yes.
Not insulated?
No.
Any reason for that?
They're, ah, those are what the original doors are, we just said replace what's there. I, I don't know.
They both enter into a heated space?
Yes. It's kept at like 50 at night, it's not overly heated normally. I mean, like during the day, it's
I, I mean, I'm not a contractor, but I would think that a hollow door, that, that heat is going to very quickly
I don't know that it's any worse than the door being opened and closed about 100 times a day, so.
Okay, I'm just curious. Counselor Fordyear.
My question, the, how do I say this? Can we find $10,000 somewhere else and borrow it from a maintenance account or something? Get all this done at once, their equipment, their forklifts, their man lifts and everything are in there once, get all the doors done. It'll cost you $8,000 to $10,000 more than she's got budgeted, and let's just get them done. 12, $14 million budget, and we can't borrow $8,000 from a reserve account and pay it back next year and get them done? The mobilization, if you split this in two, I bet you their mobilization's going to cost the other ones to go up, too. Just a thought.
I seriously doubt that there's much mobilization cost to those two small doors and whatever. They bounce around all over the state doing things like this and tow the thing around with them. And that's, unfortunately, we're looking at a single bid, so we don't know whether they're competitively priced or not, but nothing else is a guideline. Two people generally do it. That's what I don't know. I know in the past, we've had, we had quotes out of mainly vinyl. I don't know if they do commercial doors anymore or not either at that time. Either way, but that's why we had, asked for two bids, got one, don't know if it's competitive, and I honestly doubt it, this much mobilization cost in something like this.
Counselor Hamilton.
So, looking at the bid, I'm confused with, I might be looking at something incorrectly, but the bid information from PDQ Door is not in line with what you are stating.
So, if you take the $4,840 for the two manned doors plus half of the 37, would get you to the 23,408.
Okay, so, so that's, okay.
So half of the larger number and then the full smaller number, which would get us the two manned doors or people doors, and then the, one of the smaller roll-up doors and one of the larger roll-up doors.
So we do one each of, okay, got it, thank you.
Lisa, I, getting back to the insulated door.
Yep.
I would, I would be willing to entertain a motion that, to look into, into that, and if it's a reasonable amount, to have insulated doors rather than hollow, to authorize the city manager to, to go with that without having it come back to us.
And that's fine if we do the, you know, the two person entry doors and just the two, one roll, or the two roll-up doors, I still have budget.
Oh, yeah, the roll-up doors are, those are metal roll-up doors and
Can certainly look into that if that's something.
Does anyone work inside that office? It's also going to make it a lot quieter in there, too. What's the council's pleasure?
Is that a motion?
I, I would make the, I can make that a motion. I would accept that.
I'll second it. Would you state that again, your motion?
To look into insulated doors, you know, from the same company, and if the price difference between a hollow core door and an insulated door is more or less negligible, then to authorize the city manager to, to go with that rather than having it come back to us again. Counselor Fordyear.
I'd suggest, Mr. Chairman, that if we go with the motion as projected on our computers, that the manager understands pretty clear that that's under $15,000 change order, he'd be able to do it anyway. I think he's heard you and the rest of us, there's probably a good idea to look at insulated.
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
Manager Cole.
Mr. Chair, we'll, if you pass this motion, we'll look at the cost of getting an insulated door and explore the funding, and also bring it back to the Finance Committee for their consultation.
That works. So we can go with the motion as is?
You'll have to remove You'll have to remove the, um...
I'm sorry?
You'll have to remove your motion, and John's second before we can act on another motion.
Then I would take mine off the table.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, do you want to read your motion?
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to replace the doors at the transfer station and award the work to PDQ Door and to allow city manager to sign all necessary documentation. This project to be funded from the transfer station capital improvements account nine zero zero nine zero nine zero dash five nine zero two three.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, Council Order Number zero nine one nine zero five, request of the Public Works Director to apply for a DEP stream crossing culvert grant.
Good evening, councilors, I'm here tonight to talk about, I'm requesting to, approval to apply for a DEP stream crossing grant. This grant is specifically for municipally owned stream crossings that are in need of repair or replacement with a structure that will benefit wildlife and fish passage. The location I'm looking to apply for is where Red Bridge Road crosses over Deadman Brook, it's on the attached map. With the pending removal of the Old Branch Lake Stream Dam and the hopes of restoring fish passage there, this culvert is just upstream from the old dam and is a barrier to allow fish into the Deadman Brook from the Union River slash Leonard Lake. My request is to apply for this grant, and then if awarded, the intention would be to commit future funds from local roads budget to this project. The DEP maximum per project is ninety-five thousand dollars with no minimum match required, though you do have to give some match. So, there's no minimum, but you do have to have something. More investigation into this project will be required before I can give an exact cost estimate, but I assume we would go after the full ninety-five thousand as this project will exceed that amount, based on my estimates, general estimates. This location that we're looking at has, has a history of beaver issues, because it's a small culvert, beavers can easily block it, and we've had multiple issues there with a larger, my intent would be to put a larger box culvert there, and that would lessen the possibility of having beaver issues and flooding issues at that location.
Counselor Fordyear.
You anticipate putting in a lodge around culvert, or would you go with a bottomless box culvert?
I'm thinking a three-sided box.
Counselor Hamilton.
So, where I, well, I don't think that this is an unworthy request. The question I have is in relation to the local roads, there was a meeting, I did not attend, but we did have a meeting a few weeks ago on local roads with many issues identified in terms of the limited dollars that we budget. I would want this project to be put into that mix of priority, and I would certainly want to know more about what the actual cost is going to be before agreeing to apply for something and not knowing how much of the local roads budget we're going to use, especially outside of a priority. So, for me, I'm not in favor of it as it stands now because of those two issues.
So, there's a couple things. One, we can apply for it, and if they say yes, we can say no, we don't want to do it. So, there's a back out, no harm type clause if we decide that it's not a priority. We have, it's a two-year, a two-year grant, so once it's awarded, we have two years to potentially use it. And if we don't use it at the end, even if we say we want it and we don't use it, we just give it back. So, there's multiple ways to say we don't want it essentially if we decide that it's not something we want to fund down the road.
Counselor Fordyear.
Lisa, we just did a culvert crossing on Shore Road.
Yep.
Do you remember where that was in the money line?
I believe it was about one fifty, I think it was, in that range, which is what I was thinking this one would be, somewhere in that same size range, my estimate, without knowing...
So, the possibility of getting two-thirds grant on a project.
Correct.
What a good expense for your money.
Correct.
Lisa, will this change the elevation of the road?
No.
I know Shore Road, oh.
Minally, if it does, not much.
Okay.
Not significant enough that it would be.
Counselor Hamilton.
So, was this project discussed, is it on the priority items that we've been looking at, or are we looking at it because there's a grant available and that's why we want to be pursuing it?
There was multiple, so this grant has been out for a couple iterations, there was multiple things we were looking at to possibly use this grant for. One of them is exorbitant, it's, the project would cost a million dollars, so ninety-five thousand is not enough to make it a difference on the one of the ones we were looking at. So, then this one was looked at because of the removal of the street, or the dam and the opportunity to have them fund two-thirds of it.
Manager Cole.
Lisa, when is the application deadline for this?
Um, November, I have it, hang on.
And secondly, when?
November twelfth.
And when do you expect decisions from the DEP?
January, I believe.
January. In a, response to Counselor Hamilton's question, in terms of the Local Roads Committee, I believe at the next meeting, we're proposing on the agenda is, one of the items is opportunities to leverage state and federal dollars like this, even if granted, as Lisa noted, that it will have to come back to the council for approval, although we don't want to apply for money that we're gonna turn down either because then, you know, you don't want to be wasting the state's time. I know that at the next Local Roads meeting, there are larger dollar amounts through the DOT, through their partnership program, and we have a lot of DOT roads we're responsible for maintaining, so that certainly is gonna be front and center at that meeting. But those applications aren't due till, I believe, December, so there's time for discussion with the group to bring it back to the council and figure out where your priorities might be. Many of the roads that were highlighted at the Local Roads meeting would come under that program. These, these grants come up when they come up, and we made good use of the Shore Road project monies, I believe that was a ninety-five thousand dollar grant as well.
I don't know.
In that range. But certainly, we can pass on it this time as the wishes of the council and get our ducks in the line and look at going after funding next year. But these are the funds that you, you, you can't be on the DOT road, right?
Right, so this is, this is not guaranteed to be next year. They have money that they had, what, five years ago or something that we had, and they now have two and a half million this season to do these kind of projects. These are municipality-owned roads only, can't be a DOT road, can't be a private road, can't be, um, basically any of those, it has to be municipality-owned, and so how often these come up? I don't, I don't know, I can't say that it'll be around next year.
Right, this is a different program than the funding we got for the Shore Road through the same agency, but it's a different pot.
Right, so...
Lisa, when the culvert gets plugged and...
Yep.
How much staff time is involved in clearing it, and how much damage does it cost?
And that's one of the key things that's part of the grant application is, what are the saved maintenance costs over the years? Bernie could better answer that one on how often that's been plugged and how long it takes, I mean, it can take, we can clear a culvert and maybe, depending on how bad it's plugged up, in say, two to four hours, and then come back the next day and it's plugged up again. And so, it's a continually, you know, you don't know until you relocate or catch the beaver and relocate him. And then they move to a different one, and then you're doing the same thing somewhere else, and so it's, it depends, each one's different. This one, you know, maybe had a rash of them for three years and then nothing for a few years, but then it could go back again, and it's, there's varying ones all over the city that have issues. This is just one of many, and it happens to be one that this grant allows to be on streams that have fish and such in them, as well as it's on the municipality-owned road. There's other ones that I would love to do, but they're on DOT roads, and so we can't apply for this grant for this, or on private roads, so.
Counselor Fordyear.
I, I think in order to get, to meet the deadline, I'd like to ask you to approve this, and you've got time to say no later before tax dollars are spent, but if we dilly-dally too much, we're not gonna have a chance to say yes.
I agree, I don't, I don't see the harm in applying for this. Ninety-five thousand dollars grant to get this done and to keep that damn thing from plugging up all the time, to me is, is something that, that needs to be done.
And a future council gets the choice.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton.
So, I would just echo what Manager Cole said about, I don't think we should be applying for projects that we aren't going to go forward in, or forward with. I, there are other culverts that get plugged up as well. I'd just go back to the same, my same question is, we're talking about fifty-five thousand dollars roughly, of dollars that will be taken out of the local roads to be on this project, and if this is not a higher project than some of the other needs that we have for roads in the city, I, that's my issue, and since we don't have that information to vet it, I, I am not comfortable voting something through when we're not looking at it from that, through that lens. It's great to get ninety-five thousand, but if this is a project number thirty on a list of five hundred projects, you know, we, we need to vet the other twenty-nine would be more value and that fifty-five thousand should be directed in that manner, so that's what my concern is in terms of moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel, oh, Manager Cole.
Yeah, I would say, though, if the project doesn't have value, it's not gonna compete very well, because this is a highly competitive pot of funds. I think in the eyes of your Public Works Director, among eligible projects and needs, that this one rose to the top. Can't say what the Local Roads Committee will think in the end, we haven't been through that process yet, but oftentimes, projects rise up based on partnering opportunities, and it's an opportunity to do that, but I also understand what Counselor Hamilton's saying, because we, at this point, we haven't prioritized as of yet, but this is a pot of funds that just came up, it's non-recurring funds, we don't know if we'll get them again. Generally, they go on the state roads, and this time, it's on the municipal roads, so, you know, there is no perfect answer here, it's, you know, it's just a judgment call, whether you go for it or not.
Counselor Fordyear.
We must find out. Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to apply for Main Department of Environmental Protection stream crossing grant with required MAT funding coming from future local roads budget.
Second. Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All in favor except for Counselor Hamilton, who opposes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen, Council Order Number zero nine one nine zero six, request the wastewater superintendent for approval to purchase a pavement cutter with remaining funds in the wastewater construction account. This has been requested to be removed from the agenda this evening.
Don't move.
Sorry? All in favor? Unanimous. Item sixteen, public hearing in action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-six, general assistance, a general assistance ordinance. Good evening, Tina.
Good evening. Katina House, General Assistance Administrator, here to answer any questions you guys may have about my yearly maximums. There was an increase this year, but it was a long time coming, so.
One question, Mr. Chairman, is this, do you expect this to negatively affect your budgeting?
No.
Okay. Quick answer, I like.
Yeah, well, in the last, previous years, if you've noticed, like, you'll see one person, one, one person's eligible for assistance for a month, and it's been remaining at like six hundred and ninety-eight, I think, and it's pretty much impossible for one person to live off six hundred and ninety-eight dollars a month, so there was some assessments done, and with the cost of living raise, and, um, pretty much the minimum wage, too, has increased, so there was a increase just in the individual portion. It's probably seventy-five to a hundred dollars per person in the household, so.
Anyone else? Counselor Hamilton.
Just as a side note, I work in an arena where I have contact with individuals from another part of the state, and just wanted to let you know that, how they complimented the work that you do in managing the program, and just wanted publicly...
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. Much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, resolve to approve the amendments to the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter...
We need a public hearing.
It is a public hearing?
Yep.
Oh, sorry? Hold that thought. Run the hearing, we'll do it again.
Public hearing is open on this item, if there's anyone that would like to speak on it, now's your time, please. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, resolve to approve the amendments to the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-six, general assistance ordinance as presented.
Second. Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Certified General Assistance Coordinator now, right, Tina?
Item seventeen, Council Order Number zero nine one nine zero seven, request to approve a contract between the City of Ellsworth and Northern Light Medical Transport that provides quarters at the Ellsworth Fire Department and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary agreements. Manager Cole.
You want a motion and not talk?
Yep. That works for me.
We beat this to death, but there's the public out there also.
I, I would note that the agreement that has been crafted and vetted through attorneys is materially much the same as the agreement we've been operating under. Chief Tupper and Ed Moorhead from Northern Light can speak to any questions you may have about the agreement, but I think you'll find it in order. What it, for the public, since, I believe, last November through the present time, the ambulance service, Northern Light Ambulance Service, has been placed here at City Hall through a facilities agreement. This extends that facilities agreement, much in the same note, the way it's operated with some changes requested by the deputy city manager, I believe, and to, to make it more efficient. Otherwise, I think it's good to go for your consideration.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the revised housing agreement between the City of Ellsworth and Northern Light Medical Transport, provides quarters at the Ellsworth Fire Station.
Second. Motion and a second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item eighteen, Council Order Number zero nine one nine zero eight, discussion in action on the request of the deputy city manager on behalf of the residents for acceptance of Alexis Way located within Deer Meadows subdivision, based on the approval criteria set forth in the adopted road acceptance policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, back in May of two thousand seventeen, the residents of Deer Meadows subdivision had petitioned the City of Ellsworth to accept their road, Alexis Way, as a city street.
Because the city did not meet the road standards of the city, they asked the city to bring this road up to city standards and then reimburse the city through a special assessment. The city hired Andrew McCullough to evaluate the condition of the road and to determine what improvements were needed to bring the road up to our standards. Based on Mr. McCullough's evaluation, the road needed some fine grating, shoulder and ditch work, and some paving. The City Council approved the upgrades and authorized the borrowing. The construction is now complete, and this is the next step in this, this process. The total cost of the engineering, construction costs, estimated bond interest, and attorney fees for the road improvements is $152,056. The residents have paid their statutory one-third down. The remaining balance will be assessed through a supplemental tax bill each year to each of the residents. I did want to add, I will be coming back next month to authorize an additional $25,000 to borrow for this project. Back, oh, a year ago, the Council had authorized $80,000 to, to construct this road. That was based on the initial estimates, and because the road did come in much higher, so, but that figure has been already calculated into what they are paying us back, so there's not going to be any effect on them. We just need to ask to borrow more money.
And I would add, the Council was aware of this at the time.
Yep.
But it will be recaptured through taxes, not through tax dollars.
And I just want to add, this process was done about seven years ago, and it was completed successfully on Fieldstone Way, or Road Now.
I would commend the Deputy City Manager because this is a long process. It's a lot of coordination, and it's good to see it come to an end.
Tammy, I'm just curious, does this change the name of the street to Alexis Street or Road?
Road.
Road.
No way.
No way? All right, I got you.
Long way.
Mr. Public Record, did they meet all requirements?
Yes, sir, they have.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Residents of Alexis Way to accept the road as a public street.
Second. Motion in second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Another one to plow, Lisa.
Item nineteen, Council Order Number 091909, Request to Authorize the City Manager to Enter into a Contract Between the City of Ellsworth and Stephen E. Joy Regarding Access to Leonard Lake Roadway for Purposes of the Branch Lake Stream Dam Removal.
Okay. Let me get my papers in order here. First, for the benefit of the public, about three years ago, the city was approached by the Down East Salmon Federation. Brett Ciccarelli from the Salmon Federation is here with us tonight with the idea of removing the remnants of the Branch Lake Stream Dam, which hasn't been in operation for decades, I understand, and with the idea of removing an obstruction to fish passage. We brought it to the Council, culminating in approval by the Council, I believe last March, of an agreement between the City of Ellsworth and the Down East Salmon Federation to allow for the removal of the dam and the use of our access road from Christian Ridge Road to the dam. Through that process, they hired a contractor, I believe it was J.E. Butler LLC, who came on board, and in the process of having a pre-construction meeting and discussing the logistics of all of this, they met with the property owner where the road easement traverses. In the spirit of working with the property owner, who was concerned about damage to his private property, the Salmon Federation commissioned a survey, and through that survey, it was discovered that the 1989 easement is laid out, and where the actual road wet, meandered off. Oh, I'm sorry, what did it, yes, eighteenth, sorry, another century. Wandered off, and the long and the short of it is that the private property owner posted the property. The city's position was that even though much of it was no longer in the original easement, that the city had prescriptive rights, because as you know, if you have a camp in the state of Maine and have had access over a roadway, you continue to have those rights after a certain period, period of time. An advice of attorney, rather than going to court and settling the dispute through a quiet title action, the attorney advised that it would be cheaper for all parties to do it as a taking of a new easement that followed the roadway. As of last Thursday night, the property owner emailed the city, emailed me with the idea of taking down the no trespassing signs and working out an arrangement that could accommodate this demolition. Last Friday morning, at the special council meeting to take up this item, the Council directed the manager to work with the property owner and to come up with an agreement that could accommodate the demolition. What you have before you is an agreement that was negotiated since Friday with the help of our attorney with, a attorney with Rudman and Winchell, and repeated discussions with the property owner. The property owner's primary concern was damage to his property. The code enforcement officer and I went out to the site on Friday afternoon with a measuring tape, and we looked at the septic tank that Mr. Joy had noted, as well as an electrical box, and anyways, the long and the short of it is that Mr. Joy said he would make his loop road available for turning around equipment, backing out equipment, and that negated the need to take any initial, additional property for those logistical purposes. So before you, you have an agreement that I believe covers Mr. Joy's concerns. It also covers the concerns brought up by the Council to ensure that we had what we needed to, to go forward with this project. The other thing I would note is that in the agreement with the Down East Salmon Federation and a subsequent agreement with the contractor, they're required to carry $5 million in umbrella coverage, which would cover damages that may occur in restoration that needs to be done, and Public Works Director can speak to that if you might, as she negotiated that agreement and contract. And you have before you the agreement as proposed and blessed by our attorneys, and is actually signed by Stephen Joy. I have a, I have a photo of the signature page being signed, and with your approval, the manager can also sign the agreement. And hopefully, this allows the Council to go ahead and withdraw the taking, or, excuse me, the condemnation order that would take the new easement, that would make that moot.
Thank you very much. Councilors, questions?
Good job.
Say a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Council Order 091909 to authorize the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Stephen E. Joy to ensure adequate access to Leonard Lake Roadway for purposes of the removal of the Branch Stream, Branch Lake Stream Dam and related activities.
Second. Motion in the second. Further discussion?
Someone asked me the other day, when did Branch Pond become Branch Lake, but we won't get into that discussion.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, move to withdraw consideration, item number twenty, Council Order 091910, from the agenda.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Move adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?